Our flag will remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of the marriage to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Dear God, please bless our planning commissioners, grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen. Faber Hall, please.
Of course. Rick?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Kevin?
Andrea?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Nick?
Here.
Tracy?
Has everyone had a chance to review the February 14th, 2024 Planning Commission minutes? Any corrections?
Oh, in a minute.
I make motion to approve the minutes from February 14th, 2024.
To board.
And moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was that Nick who supported? I'm sorry.
It was Dennis.
Dennis, thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, correspondence? Not seeing any today. Public comment. Anyone here would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. No late agenda items, no introduction. We're gonna start off with the public hearing. For special land use 24-01, SMJ International, Baroneck Communication Tower at 3600 Glover Road. Please direct all questions to me. Alright, we can start with Alex.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So, very much in front of you, you have an application for special land use by SMJ International. We reviewed the site plan, provided you all with a checklist, as well as the, a letter to summarize our findings. There are a few informational and zoning compliance items that are outstanding, and I think the applicant probably speak to it today. Just for, you know, just as required by the zoning ordinance, there's some missing information regarding gross net acreage for the site. I understand that there is existing agricultural residential use on the site, however, that isn't necessarily provided. Soil borings, most soil borings have been completed. I'm not sure if the Plan Commission is interested from a planning perspective regarding soil borings. It is near a water feature. Surface drainage, drainage for the site, I don't believe I saw calculations, but I'd probably have the engineer refer to some of the grading requirements for that site. Regarding zoning compliance, overall, my biggest concerns are screening. I know that there's existing vegetation on that site, however, it's bordering residential use, higher intensity residential use, subdivision to the west. So, I want to make sure that screening is there. There's no screening proposed towards the street. I'm not sure if the applicant or Plan Commission are interested to have a discussion about screening. General parking requirements. So, the parking space and size is not provided. I'm assuming this won't be a lot of parking or vehicular traffic, besides the occasional, you know, technical review of the site for engineering or telecommunications perspective, but just, you know, there is a parking requirement. I'm not sure if the Plan Commission is interested in possibly waiving that. A few more items here is, like I said, screening, and along with what we discussed a minute ago about, I'm sorry, I mentioned, forgot to mention the proposed barbed wire fence, barbed wire committed on the site in our zoning ordinance. So, I'm not sure if the applicant wants to address that, and obviously, screening, you mentioned earlier. The screening, this section requires any site with a construction or any sort of a budding or residential use parcel, just all greenbelt wall or landscaper. If it were a parcel that is an agricultural residential parcel, surrounded by agriculture and single-family dwellings, a greenbelt would install on the site with the Plan Commission. So, like I said, parking, screening, barbed wire, and also regarding telecommunications section 2.22. And it's also, there isn't, I don't think anything noted on the site plans regarding co-location for communication tower on the site, so I'm worried the applicant can maybe answer that for us if they're going up for co-location of other providers for cellular communication.
Corey?
Mostly items that we all might as a concern, Alex, it's touched upon, the remaining, one of the components we talked about, you know, landscaping, screening typically in the past, the fencing area has been screened in these type of facilities, and the, really the only engineering concern we have is the proximity to the county drain, and either a clearance from the drain office, that they are outside of that area, or that their drainage that goes sheet flows kind of towards that direction is not of a concern from the drain office. Would really be the last engineering component that we would look for. They did modify the plans, it includes stone filter, that would address water quality, and again, it's not a major impact because of the surface material and size, but it does, the way it's proposed, it does flow to the west, which is a, which is a county drain.
Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to add, I forgot to mention here, it does special land use, Dan. This is a special land use. So, in order to approve the use of a communication tower on the site, there is, in your packets, all five A, B, I'm sorry, C and D, all four standards for special land use. Just to note that the applicant, the plantations of the, the proposed special land use meets all five, all four of the standards. Our findings are also in your report.
Alex? So, we have special land use in the site plan, so is it a protocol to approve the site, special land use in one motion? And the site plan can be approved in a second motion? Is that how we typically?
You can do that, yeah, I mean, you have to do that, because you have to approve special land use in the site plan, but I guess, I think the point is, you made that if you do not approve special land use, there's no real point of delivering on the site plan.
Okay.
Yep, great.
Questions for Alex or Corey?
Shouldn't you have a lot of height? Is that something that needs to go to the ZBA?
It's a good question here. I know that we, pretty sure that the DTE had to go to the ZBA, because they're over like 75 feet, if I remember? Yeah, the thing is, DTE is a different structure. For telecommunication, bear with me, because my computer isn't what does.
They have over there, it was just the ground rods, I believe, that were sticking up.
Right, is DTE a telecommunication site, or a different use?
It's a different use.
So...
I had, I had, you recall, if the DTE went to the, to the right?
That was a different use than communication tower. Their power is, I like to call.
Yeah. I wish I could answer that for you. It doesn't appear to me that, from my initial review and now, that there is a provision regarding the height of the communication tower.
Because in some way, the antenna is treated as a structure, right? It requires a foundation and all that, so I'd imagine it could have some type of height requirements.
Yeah, so in your-
It's not infinite, right, so?
Yeah, I agree. Reasons I can't answer, your table of use requirements on page 830, communication towers, has a definition as a parking space, one parking space requirement, and refers back to section 2.22, which we just discussed a minute ago, deserving warrants. In section 2.22, there is no mention of the, of the site. It doesn't surprise us, so.
And also not seeing a height in 2.22.
But you are right to ask that. I mean, a lot of communities have a limitation of either 150, 200, 250.
Well, any other questions at this point?
One other question. Alex, did you say there's a subdivision to the west when you're talking about screening?
I believe that there is a neighborhood there, sort of a cluster of homes to the west.
On the side of the drain?
Yeah. Hollow pine is a little ways away.
Yeah, it is a waste.
Put away its bud, you know, being the tower, the nature of the tower, the height of the tower. Would be, I don't know, screening is gonna do anything. If it's hollow pine-
But it's coming off Kitter Road?
No, hollow pine is off private corners.
Oh, off private corners?
Yeah.
Oh, it comes in from the north.
Okay.
It's all wooded back there right now. I missed that, that's all.
Just that the screen that's being proposed is just essentially, to my understanding, just existing trees there. There isn't any other additional screening proposed by the applicant at the base of the tower.
Other questions?
Alex, oh, sorry. I do, you had mentioned the lack of soil borings. Is your concern more so for structural analysis, or environmental, or what would you like to see reviewed on that?
It's in the zoning ordinance, so I can't pick and choose what applies or doesn't apply. You know, based on what the applicant demonstrates, I have to determine, you know, what the applicant's proposal, based on what the zoning ordinance says. So, if there's soil borings on there, that's for the Plan Commission to determine whether or not. And a question like that, I would do a line of commentary with the engineer about it, you know, just on a superficial level, there's water in the area, so.
But we do have soil borings, right? C31?
There are soil borings on C31 on the set that I printed off. I didn't see, I didn't see the demarcation, but yes, you are correct. On C31, if we answer the question regarding soil borings, they're used for multiple uses. Sometimes they are structural, which would be in this case. Sometimes they're just generally used for more like septic, house construction on private roads. A lot of times they're used if you're doing a commercial building, one for footing, one for septic, because that's what we have. So, there are different uses for it. Is it zoning requirement? But in the past, it's often been provided at some point, not always, sometimes at this stage, sometimes at a later stage, because it's more relies on the engineering and building requirement.
Any other questions for Corey or Alex?
I have one. Alex mentioned here that he had the gross and net acreage figures, no acreage information provided. It's right here. Proposed 100 by lease area, 0.23 acres, unless I'm misunderstanding what his note is. So, I'm sorry, page C2, it's in the upper left corner of the, of the fenced area, I guess, if that's what you want to call it.
Number C2?
S2 or C2?
No, C2.
C2. At the top left of the square. Curious if he's looking for something different.
Oh, no, well, just for the overall site, just for perspective. Yeah, I understand that 100 by 100, but I meant like for the overall acreage. It's just a requirement for informational purposes to have in the site plan.
I'm trying to understand what you're asking, because I-
Your zoning ordinance requires this information to be put on every site plan for record. The acreage, the everything, all the stuff that we know, just the basic information about the site. So, that information, I can't pick and choose and say, this is relevant or irrelevant. That's for the Plan Commission.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what you're, if what you're looking for is different than what they're showing here.
Well, I mean, it's, it's essentially an accessory used to the main site. I mean, the site, the purpose of that site is agricultural, it's unproprietated. It's not, you know, it's a special land use that's allowed on that. So, it's not parcelled off, it's still-
Oh, so you're talking about the overall, the whole parcel? Okay, I, okay, I missed that. That's what I was asking.
And else?
Just to clarify, we just reviewed it, Andrea and I, 2.11 does allow barbed wire if it's in the public interest for safety. And can be with-
Yeah.
Two points.
Yeah. For safety purposes.
Yep.
I still feel the outdoor climate, I'm pretty sure.
As far as the screening, it does show webbing in the fencing, but it's not called out in the notes. A D1?
That doesn't meet the screening requirements, though.
We did accept that. We got before.
It's up to a residential.
It's a period. But Stagger, Pack Residential has web.
He has a berman trace, too, though.
So, I'm sorry, but 211, he, barbed wire, spikes, nails, instruments, top of the side of any fence for that. So, if you guys want to weigh it or even, or, you know, because they have a cemetery, it's for its purpose, for safety, that's fine, but it's prohibited as a, sorry, point.
Any other questions? Okay, the applicant would like to come forward, SMJ International. Are you Drew? Are you Drew?
I'm not Drew. My name's Aaron Adelman.
What is it?
Aaron Adelman, A-A-R-O-N. Adelman, A-D-E-L-M-A-N, colleague of Drew Napek. I'm with SMJ International. We're, yeah, we're representing Vertical Bridge.
Would like to start, any questions for the applicants? Well, just let us know what you're doing.
Sure. So, Vertical Bridge is proposing a 225-foot self-support tower at 3600 Glover. Another site, I heard it's come up with the planner, this tower will accommodate three carriers. Currently Verizon Wireless is the only one contracted to be on there, so two future co-locators would be on there. I believe this is denoted on, at least the set that I have. Apologies, just, the tower profile. On TE1, the tower elevation, you can just see that calls out where Verizon's being placed on the tower, up at 250 feet, and then-
What page do you have?
Oh, TE-1, so, towards the end of the-
T is the time?
Yeah. It's right before the electrical.
I don't have a T. Oh, there it is. TE1, you said, correct?
TE1, yep.
Can't wait for, okay.
Oh, that's T, that's T-1, yeah, this is, T, yeah. Sounds like we all found it. Yeah, this will give you the profile view of what the tower, the tower will look like, the, how Verizon's going up at the top, and then it shows the two future antennas at 235 and 220. Regarding the base, talking about, I know that they are proposing the fence, I mean, sure they'll be open to discussing landscaping as well. Just asked that it be like, you know, a condition of approval, as well as the geotech, yeah, that's the same thing, we can provide that once that's ready. I'm sure that's underway. You know, Vertical Bridge is certainly not going to construct a tower on unsuitable ground, but understanding that you guys would want to see that report, we can certainly provide that once it's, once we have that in hand. Apologies, blanking on the other questions. It's kind of, kind of the-
Net acreage, the overall-
The net acreage, yes. I will have them show that. I know there's the survey up in the front of the set. I don't know that that shows the total acreage of that parcel.
You mean, it's the words, the written paper here?
Yeah, on S1. Just the second page. But again, I realize this isn't printed on the site plan, so I can certainly make that request to them to have that added to the overall site plan.
If I can have a little clarification, it has a legal description, does not have the overall gross acreage of the site. It does include the leased area, but when you do that, it would also include the area for the access easement. So, this is kind of unique, because it's not a parcel of land, it's a leased area, it's basically an easement that they're leasing, so in this case, you'd have the overall, like Alex mentioned, the overall property, which the descriptions here, I cannot find the acreage either. And the total, you know, dimensions for everything, for the easement in the lease area, which they very simply do the math, and typically that's what's on there, a lease area of somebody's square feet, whether it's leased, the access drive and the 100 by 100, or just the 100, but just qualified areas.
Yeah, I'll let them know to, to do that.
Ask you- Chairman, if I could, please?
Yes.
The Plan Commission should also remember that the building department's going to be needing the soil borings, so if you want to defer that to the building department, because they cannot build until the building department gets that information, because it has to have an engineer seal on it, to be sure that it's going to support the height and weight of the tower.
So, yeah, I just had a clarification. Most of your drawings give the address that 3664 Glover Road, that's a house, that's a residential home. So, this driveway would be south of that home, you show the pond. I'm just confused as to why-
Sure.
All the drawings show 20, 3664.
Yeah. Can't speak to this. I'm guessing that we're gonna have to pull our own address for the tower, and either that hasn't been done yet, or, and so they're just using the 3664 as a placeholder.
Yes.
They have applied for and have prepared an address for the leased area for the tower.
Do you know that us, 3600, it's on your agenda? Okay.
Have them update the plans as well.
So, another question. You identified two FEMA floodplains on the print, your survey report. That's not a concern for the tower? You had a, you mentioned zone, you mean a C-zone, or X-zone, I don't think the X-zone is a big problem, nor the A, so that's not a problem for the tower. I'm just asking. It's right along the drain.
I mean, I'm sure it's-
Kind of the north, north corner of the-
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I can't speak for the engineer. I guess is that they certainly would know about that, and that would be like, it would be a site-by-site determination, whether that would like infringe upon their viability.
Yeah, the surveyors notice the water standing there on July 1st. Yeah, the surveyor knows the water standing there on July 1st. Interesting.
Questions for the applicants?
Is the fenced area, as it noted, as 75 feet by 75 feet in one drawing, and 60 by 75 on another? I think, I think you mean 60 by 75, at least that's what I heard.
Sorry.
That is 100 by 100 for, uh, Vertical Bridge and the fenced areas. Yeah, 60 by 75 is on sheet C21, and previous sheets had it at 7, I think it's, I think the correct one is 60 by 75. I just think the drawings need to be one or the other. Yeah, sheet C2 has 75 by 75, sheet C2.1 has 60 by 75.
Yeah, I'll have to get them to clarify which is the correct, and, uh, have it, have it matched throughout, sure.
Um, how far off the road is the tower?
Oh, I just saw that, that measurement, it is 484 feet from the pad to the center line of the road.
Well, I'm gonna open the public hearing, so you can go ahead and have a seat.
You keep your time.
So at 7:32, I'm opening the public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item?
I own the property to the north.
Could you state your name, please?
Howard Redd.
Howard Redd.
It's the Red family, I'll see on your print. And, uh, that seems to be about the only thing clear on these plans that they have. You get a measurement from this guy and that guy, and that guy, first of all, I'd like to know what the need is for another cell tower. There's one a half a mile away as the crow flies, there's one two miles away as the crow flies. And why does you have to take Ag residential property and make special use out of it, when you have all this property on Bandeik that's already zoned for industrial or commercial? They could facilitate that just fine. The other thing, it's very wet down there, too. So when they put a road in, where's the water gonna go from the road, are they gonna ditch along there? Right now, there's no ditch out front where they're gonna put a culvert in, and if you went by the field tonight, you would see water standing in there. So, that's some of the questions I think the planning commission should consider, because, like I said, I don't know what the need for it would be. And it doesn't do anything for my property, it's right on the property line. I think it's, uh, 15 feet off my fence. And it shows trees and stuff in there that ain't in there. I mean, should take a good look at what they're trying to bring up here. They don't know how deep the borings are, or how tall it's gonna be, or, number one, why do they need a cell tower, period. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this item? So we can have the applicant response, please?
Thanks, uh, I can't really speak to the condition of the site as it is right now, I, I haven't been out there. So, I will bring that back to, uh, to the landowner and to the tower owner's attention. Um, and as far as need, um, I can tell you that Verizon Wireless brought this, or, Vertical Bridge brought this on behalf of Verizon Wireless, as Verizon needed to cover their, uh, to provide coverage in the area. I, I do know of the other towers in the area, there's a lot of determining factors in how they place these, I know they don't, they don't just place them willy-nilly, they, they try to co-locate on existing things that feasible, um, it sounds like that wasn't feasible here, so Verizon needed an alternate solution to, uh, to, you know, provide coverage to that area. I can ask them to provide maps that, that could help illustrate, you know, their before and after, show that, the need for that. Hopefully that could help, uh, provide that, answer that question.
The, uh, landowner to the north made mention of the trees that are shown on the plant, these, those trees are not there now.
Again, uh, look, these are signed stamp plans, I, I can't speak to what, to the conditions there now versus what's in the plans.
I have an additional question, um, for the generator, um, has there been any studies in terms of noise abatement? Um, what this means as it runs, because I assume it probably runs periodically, though, um...
Sure, yeah, I, I know they have, like, standard, like, um, whatever, like, the, the technical specs that they provide from, like, the, the thing, I don't know that they run a, a specific noise site for this site, if that's what you're asking.
I'm wondering if, if they have noise contour lines, uh, at all to determine how, um, how loud this is gonna be.
Sure, yeah, I will, I will ask, I will put that to them.
They have 250 feet, is there gonna be, like, a picture or anything on, even playing out the structure?
I'm playing there.
Some of the shows on there.
If, if I may, for the planning commission, some of the questions there that came up in, all just of the planning commission, this, what they're proposing is a driveway, uh, it's not a road, it's not as wide, not as intense. They are proposing a shallow ditch, that's basically between the driveway and the north property line to direct all the water flow to the west, which ultimately goes to the drain, again, which leads it to the question that we had before about, uh, either permit from the drain, or a letter stating there's, there's not a need from the drain, because that is the direction that they're directing the surface water. Uh, the closest, the driveway itself, and farthest north edge appears to be about 25 feet off the property line, 15 feet is the setback limits, uh, they do exceed that by a little bit. And the trees that are shown on there on the adjacent property, they're, they're presented as a representation of where the trees are located. Uh, as we mentioned in more of our previous reviews, and I always mention tonight, they're not proposing any additional screening, the landscaping is part of this, I think their argument is it's, it's, uh, far off the road, and it is, it's 450 something feet from the road. Um, and then to the west, there's the drain and ditch and screening, but, uh, there will be some aspects you'll see from the road, and that's something that the planning commission has considered in the past, it should consider in this case, whether it's adequate or not. And noise levels for something like this typically is not a standard requirement, but is absolutely within the, um, right of the planning commission to request to see that information.
Questions for the applicant?
Can I have a question?
Please.
Why does it have to be 15 feet for the neighbors? It's putting your neighbor's, the public site, don't know why that's so close.
Um, I, again, I can't speak to the specifics of that, I, I can take that back to them and get why they chose that specific location. Yeah, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to speculate, so I'd have to take that back to them.
It's like it's a working farm, and they don't want to impact the working farm.
Sounds like you have quite a few questions to get answered for us.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, 7:41, thank you. So who would like to start off, any thoughts regarding?
Well, it sounds to me, come on ahead, Rick.
I'd just like to, um, second what Howard said about the location and the need, um, that's not provided. Why, 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 what, is there a need, and is that the right location for, for one, before we move forward? And two, I'd like to know more about the, about the height. I'm sure it's somewhere, it's not, it's not infinite, there has to be a limit somewhere, so...
So it sounds like we need to capture what he needs to go back and talk to, well, partially Verizon, Vertical Bridge. We need to capture some of those questions and allow them time to do that. I get, coverage need that comes from Verizon. Uh, I agree with Alex's question, when you look at that field, why is he so close to the property line? Noise levels? The height is not in their lane. To your question, Rick, that's not in their lane, am I right?
Or that's on our side, I think, right, to decide if that's what...
Corey, to your question on the county drain, you wanted more room from, more space between the county drain?
I don't know that, it's not, the easement's not shown on there, there is an easement for that county drain.
Okay.
And all, all we're looking for is clarification, acknowledgement from the drain office that, one, permits acquired or permits not needed.
I believe they're typically 100 feet.
Yeah, and I, and I don't have that with me, that was in one of the previous, previous reviews, I believe it's, uh, I believe it is 100 feet for that drain. They vary from 80 to 120 typically.
I think around here, it seems like for the most part, between the work they did in my old yard, and then what they have right by my house now, it's 100 feet.
Generally, they're centered on a drain if the drains are well established, it's not always the case, but generally, it's a good rule of thumb.
And my question, the beacon light, how does that fit in with our ordinance?
Yeah, that's a good question, I think these are all very valuable questions to answer, uh, to, you know, to provide. Is, is, I think the thing is to focus here is to focus on special land use. I know we're deliberating a lot about the qualitative, the quantitative aspects of dimensional height setback, things of that nature, and those do factor in, but as Dennis discussed, mentioned earlier, that you guys need to really look at the qualitative aspects of this proposed use, special land use on this site. You're not taking away all economic value of the site, it's still a working farm, but you need to really evaluate the foresting that you have for special land use. Uh, you know, the first one talks about noise and light, the second one talks about property values. Um, and the proposed use is designed, located in a plant, to be operated at, public health, safety, welfare, to be protected, so, I understand those dimensional things, but we have to value also the qualitative things, this isn't just, if you fit in the box, you get to do it. Um, I understand this, and maybe some, yeah, shoot, some problems, some, some items in the zoning ordinance, but it's still a special land use, and the planning commission needs to determine if the applicant is demonstrating that they're meeting these standards for special land use.
We really can't say, because we don't know how loud it's gonna be for the generator, correct? Is there gonna be a parking spot? Parking, if they're gonna have a parking spot or not, it's not on the plans.
So that there's not a, a parking spot? There's not a D-mark parking spot, it is an unmanned facility. Um, it is designed so that an emergency vehicle can come all the way up to the compound and be able to, you know, turn around and make all their turns, but like I said, it's unmanned, so there, there is no designated parking spot.
Are you saying you can't prove A in the reduced standard until you know? There's a possibility.
I mean, that's what it seems like.
The commission can take action now, postpone or deny, I mean, because it's, it's up to you guys, if you feel that the applicant demonstrated. Standards of special land use, and deficiencies in the site plan, and there's things that I think are being questioned in this special land use, so it's sort of light, there's a term. If they've met the standards.
And to clarify the, the process on this, too, this is really a three-phase, you have to have a pub, three parts, you have to have a public hearing, you have a special land use, and you have a site plan. Those can all be done at the same time, they can all be done at different times. Elmont Township at times, in, in the recommendation we have for the public hearing is, engineering-wise, I believe there's enough information to have a public hearing, talk about the project, understand the project, take input on the project. Um, there were, um, some items that were remaining on the review that they would address, but we didn't believe it was a major impact for a public hearing aspect, that's why we did not have an issue with a public hearing. Special land use can be done, if you agree there's enough in the special land use, and it meets those requirements, you can approve that, and not the site plan, that can be a later day. Elmont Township has done both of those, they've approved a special land use, tabled the site plan for the next meeting. A lot of times, they've done both in the same meeting, if the owners are happy where it's going, table both of them, they come, applicant has, you know, two weeks, two and a half weeks to get everything addressed to the next meeting, and then can get them both done at that meeting. So let's say, it's a multifaceted, with a special land use and public hearing, there's, there's different steps, and I think that's part of why, um, there's still housekeeping items on here, is because from our aspect, we approved it for a, for a public hearing to get all the input from planning commission members from the public, knowing they still had to address items on the plans. I don't know if that makes sense, it's not always, if we always wait for the public hearing to be when everything's done and addressed, a lot of times, questions come up at public hearings from neighbors, from planning commission members, and they kind of go back to the drawing board to address those, so, that's why the public hearing was put in to get all that input up front, and then give the applicant the time to address it if needed, or let the planning commission consider, set approval, tabling, or postponing, approving, postponing, or denying the, uh, the request.
My opinion, considering all of the issues, I would be in favor of postponing. Anyone care to make any motion?
Any motion?
An emotion.
So just the special land use is on the agenda, right? I mean, not to say that we weren't, we couldn't approve both, but I'll make a motion to postpone the special land use 24-01.
Support. It's been moved and supported, roll call please.
Do we need to identify the things that need to be adopted?
Do you have a pretty clear understanding?
Okay. I would think they had been, in case he comes back. In case he comes back and people's memories are short. I would, you want to, I would suggest that. Shoes that we currently have. Well, I'm trying to read them off. And add to your overall acreage, that's the overall acreage, noise, noise level of the generators. The coverage for Verizon's need for that location on the, on the tower. Address why that location is so close to the property line. And clarification on the easement for the county drain.
Notice down here that the, the fire department didn't review that as well. I don't know if the driveway to the fire trucks or. That may be an issue as well.
That would be an R.A. Just about screening, talks about parking. Screening, park, I think parking's been addressed. Take it.
Whether it's going to be barbed wire or not.
I personally think barbed wire's a good idea.
Give a consensus and say that whether we agree or not on that, I kind of agree with Dennis.
I'm okay with barbed wire. And I don't, I don't see a need for a dumpster either. Okay.
So we have the revised motion, including overall acreage, noise level, coverage need, location, close to property, county. Light, screening, fire, and fencing.
Yes.
Okay. The roll call please.
Rick?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Andrea?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
One other thing, I think it goes back to co-location. And our ordinance requires that if the letter of intent should address that you're willing to co-locate at a reasonable lease rate. I think Alex pointed that out. Your letter of intent says there's two locations for co-locating and your ordinance states that you agree in the letter of intent to, that you would lease those at a reasonable rate. So you need to state the, the ordinance spells it out. Thank you.
Alex, Corey, I understand your question. So for like decommission, is that covered within the lease with the property owner? Doesn't have anything to do with us, or?
Yeah, typically it doesn't have, it's not a township requiring a decommission.
Out with the land on the thing.
Yeah, you, I mean, you definitely could get, see the proposed lease agreement. It should cover that in there, that's a document which will be provided in the township.
Let's move on to Kitter Road condos.
Hello, my name is, uh, Michelle Pancera. We're proposing eight, eight, seven, sevens.
Before you start, this, this was what we talked about last week, this is something that I work with a client on, so I'm, I'm not able to physically move off the table. Because this is not an engineering item, this is something that we were, give specific permission from the township supervisor to do as a survey-related project, we don't want to do surveys. So we've done this one other time in a township through a similar scenario. If there was any entity or any part of this that required engineering review from the township in this work that we cannot do. And because there's not, we as a company seek specific approval to do until we ever get started on it. So that, that's why you see this in our title block, I was going to put this together. I'll move over here in case there's any questions, and I guess I can speak to it once, on this, as far as the process. Because it's been a little while, the last one that came through here was the one that we did up just north of here a little bit. So I can step through the process for what, what's involved, this is only step one in what else we've done for the site condominium.
So your approval came from township supervisor?
Yes. We simply saw that before we did anything, it's been, been a couple of years now, because this is a, some of the things that go, that's going on with the site, I'll, I'll move to. But yes, we will seek approval, the township supervisor, that this is not a conflict for what our contract is with the township.
Okay. So this is seven parcels that are going to be called site condo. They're not actually condos, it's just a term used, site condo, to, uh, veer away from the division law. They're going to be residential homes waterfront, right off of Kitter Road. There'll be no new, the, all the driveways will come off of Kitter Road. So there'll be no private roads, no extension of roads from Van Dyke. These homes will probably be right around the 2,000 square foot mark. More than likely going to be all walkouts, all, all waterfront. And then any other questions, I believe Corey can probably answer if you have any.
If you understand what this, so the site condominium, we have to get preliminary approvals, and we have to get final approvals. Step in preliminary approvals, we have to get, make sure there's soil and water availability through the health department, through testing of wells, test wells, soil perks. We, we've done all that work, we've got preliminary approval from the health department in that aspect. We also have to get, we don't, I think we have to, but this is a unique site, get approval from the road commission for the driveways. We have preliminary approval, but as you're aware out there, there is some terrain, so they are very limited to where these driveways can go, and that was quite a process to get that done, so we've done that. Part of getting final approval from the road commission prior to any homes or driveways being built. There is some corrections, some work that has to be done on Kitter to help level out some of the slopes. And we're not talking a lot, we're talking, I think, 10, 11 inches for site distance to meet that. Because technically, Kitter Road is classified as a 55 mile an hour road. Which, it's not, it's a whole nother argument, but it's a 55 mile road, so we have to make sure the vertical curves meet that. There's some adjustments that have to be done to the road prior to any of this being finalized. And then also, because the, this is a waterfront property coming off of the tail end of an active mining operation. The mining operation has to be complete before these can be done, or the mining operation has to be modified, which would come back to, I believe, the board, township board, to modify the limits of where it is to exclude this area out of the pit. Because currently, it's part of, it's been all restored, it's done, it's not being mined, but it is part of the act, active permit area for the, for the operation that's there. So that's why there's a little bit more to this one than just cut a site condo and go. But again, reiterate why, why we can do this, there is not any roads, any sewer, any water main, any construction other than survey documents. And then once that is all put together, gets submitted to the township for planning commission review, and then the township attorney reviews the legal documents involved with that. So these, these will meet all the underlying zoning that's required for this area, they have to do this for the condominium act. So it's essentially, like Mr. Pancera talked about, it's another mechanism to do land splits. Much more involved, but without that mechanism, you couldn't do what's being done here. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
So you show the shoreline, in our quarter?
Yes.
So the acreage, this, the state unit five, the acreage you've shown there is out in the water?
Yes. There's not an exclusion for that, that type of acreage.
Right. You're still, you're still exceeding the 30,000 square foot of dry land, I hope, yeah, that's what it would look like.
In all of these sites, that you see the building footprint as a typical footprint that Mr. Pancera has built. It is a larger footprint, we did that to include a larger area. But what you see the septic and the driveways on these are the locations where those will go. And I said, I speak especially for the driveways, there's been a lot of work that's been done to determine that, some of them are perfectly fine, but they're very limited. Most of them very limited in the area where the driveways can go, even with corrections to Kitter Road. Yes, I do. Yes.
Oh, you understand shall be accessed from Holland Road?
Oh, which one, four, uh, see? That was the last one that was here, was on Holland Road. A little bit.
I got it marked out a little bit.
I don't have a copy.
Sure. I'm not understanding this relationship with our engineer working for our applicant, but I'll, I'll, I'll understand that.
I have no problem explaining that, I'd rather explain it than.
I don't understand the criteria, how that was approved.
It, it's approved because there is nothing on this application or anything that is involved with this that requires any work under our contract with the township as far as the township engineer. There isn't anything that's here, this is all a survey and legal document. The site condominium process requires this to be presented to the planning commission. And typically, most site condominiums, there's either private or public road, there's drainage, there's stormwater detention, there's all these items which we would review.
Right.
And this, there, there is none of that here.
You did the drainage, you did the drainage.
We, we have to do a grading plan as part of the requirement for the township. That's, that's a plot plan, it's typically done, part of the building permit process. And that's the only, that's the only, if it's site condo, condominium, or any other type development. Example, Pinecrest, that's a site condominium, but it has roads, drainage, everything else. If they approach us to do that, we cannot do that one. So that's why it, we've done this a couple of times in the past in other communities, but we always clear it with the community to make sure there's no even perceived conflict of interest with it.
Okay.
So, and we, and we readily admit if the township wants to go outside and, and have it reviewed by somebody, that's fine. But this, in this case, it's a planning only. And again, once the documents are put together, they're submitted, the planning commission reviews the overall covenant restrictions, and then the exhibit B survey documents are part of that. And then those are typically reviewed by the township attorney just for legalities and everything else.
So what are you looking to come, get from the planning commission tonight?
All we're looking for is preliminary approval so we can proceed to do everything else that has to be done to file. This is step one of about three steps. And if any of those steps, we don't get that, then this is, this is a moot point. If we, if the gravel, the mining operation isn't modified, this can't be done. And that's what be, that, all has to be done prior to the final step of coming back with those covenant restrictions, the legal doc, the legal language for the development, the exhibit B documents, which are the survey documents, which we would do. And then at that point, we would also have planning commission approval, or we have road commission approval. We would have final, technically, state of Michigan approval for the condominium, because there's an application that's made to them based on the health department. And until we get this step, we can't finalize those steps. So it's just, it's a process.
Okay. So in our ordinance, 2.7 condominium subdivision approval, all development condominium subdivisions shall conform to Elmont Township subdivision design standards.
Correct.
Where do I look for that?
It's a separate document that I think is, was updated in the 80s. This actually follows, that phrase is very common, but it follows the condominium, condominium act, not the subdivision control act, it's a different mechanism. But essentially, it follows, that follows the engineering standards, where you have the roads, and that's where the subdivision control act tells you you have to have, you know, roads and access to roads and different things, so. Right.
So I'm, I'm still trying to grasp how you, it's an active mining operation right now, so what is it, you guys, I know the board approved that probably in September, maybe, Sal, I don't know. So is that tapering off, is that running out? Okay, so that has to be phased up for you.
Yes.
That comes through the end of this year though, correct? That permits get through the end of this year though, correct?
So for this to be, if the process of this would be, want to build houses by, in the summer. Because there'd have to be work done on Kitter Road and everything else, that process would have to be completed to the board, board approve the final reclamation of the mining and the mining operation permit would be, would be closed.
And then you would do the inspection on the slopes for the mining operation, once the mining?
Every, every year, we do our inspection out there.
Okay.
Yep, every year, and that, and that's, that's separate through the board, through the, through that permit.
Would that be predicated on doing that before you started this?
Yep, that would, this would, the only, the only avenue that that wouldn't be is if they came back to the board, modified their permit application to exclude this area out of it. So this can no longer be mined, access, anything else, but it's a little trickier because it's a common body of water. So that's where it's, we've, we've had discussions about that, the clean way is to go and just, once that's done, this goes.
What is this parcel, middle with nothing there, is that an access road?
That is, that is actually part of a, um, just access back to the pond area, and it was very difficult to get site distance at that point, that's why it's a non-billable. It's just tied, it's tied into the overall piece, so.
You know, I, I reviewed this pretty thoroughly. I don't have any additional comments for, for the applicant based on the planning review. You know, there isn't really anything that sticks out to me in terms of questioning, it's, it's pretty straightforward. They're just showing you potentially the proposed lot splits. These by no means are commercial or industrial uses or homes, so they're just going to pretty much end up giving you a plot plan process for homes that are recorded.
Yes.
So, so. Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, he's met your zoning standards, so there's really no questions for you.
Anyone else on the board have questions?
To be clear, this is not, this, we're asking for preliminary approval, this is not by any means a, a final, and we understand that.
Corey, does the final approval come back to the planning commission? I don't think that's what it does, because condominium subdivision add 2.7, all appropriate section. I'm not necessarily totally sure that this goes back to planning convention, correct me if I'm wrong.
The, the process we've done, and I'm saying we've done in the past here, is there isn't a formal, there's a formal disacknowledgement of the documents, the, the covenant restrictions are reviewed by the township attorney. And then, because there isn't a road here, it's a little bit different. But if it's a typical site condominium with roads, they come back and they get final approval and everything, so this is a little bit different. It's just more of a, we understand the process is what's done in the past, but no, it does not clearly state that. It states that if you have infrastructure. It states that if you have infrastructure, you have other items that have to be approved.
The only thing that I see different here to the Howland site condo development that he did is that those actually are 65 feet wide. These are only like 125.
These are different zoning. That's the only criteria.
I'm sure that has a lot to do with the driveways, too.
Site distances probably.
Site distance was very controlling in this site. As you can tell from the, to the north end, we had not as much issue with site distance. So you go to the south end, you can see there's some interesting driveway configurations. That's just the only way those could work.
You do a great job. You do great work. The condos down Holland are beautiful, and I think you put a lot of effort into it, and I appreciate you doing that. And I think these are going to sell very fast.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion or any...
Yeah, I would prefer a motion for preliminary approval of the Kitter Road site condominium.
I need a motion to get preliminary approval for the Kitter Road condo project.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All in favor, say aye. Aye, applause. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan.
Good night. Everyone's favorite thing, master plan.
There you go. I really am going to keep it short, so. I brought you down as a copy of draft future land use map. Based on all comments, parcel that had been rezoned, reviewed, reviewed. Also, just a extract of existing land use map. All we've done is we've kind of matched up the cover palette, if you will, of the uses so that, you know, they kind of, I guess, work together, improve the planning plan a little better. So, your future land use map is kind of a little one, low residential, all in all, and so I know it was the interest of the planning commission not to dramatically change Ag residential. So we love that there, the uses they use, but still propose future land use for Ag Residential. So we counter for at least a result possible. So if there's anything that you guys have any questions or comments on, that's kind of it. I'll be working towards your draft master plan for you guys to review.
Like later.
It's really good.
So that was, you know, that was the one we looked at a long time ago. And then, you know, we have this as your future land use map. So there's really not a lot, just a few of the parcels that were rezoned. Yep, if you guys wanted that to be zoned, that use.
Got a question on the, what you bring up is in the residential low area. What made you choose the size that you did? The reason why I ask is like on the south side of that space, like there's orchards in that area. Is that...
So, is here? So it was just based on the comments from the planning commission from before. I did bring a copy of this. This was the proposed future land use map from the 2018 master plan. So I know the color's a little different, but all that there was also zone low density residential there. So whatever use occurs can continue to occur in perpetuity. If an applicant came in and wanted to rezone on that to a low density, low density residential use, they could. It's really what it is. So, and so we're both, we're just a future land use map.
And when we were talking about redefining the R1A and R2AB, was it? Was, so under the residential low, is that under the category of, I think it was two acres per parcel?
Yeah, we could work on that zoning map, zoning plan that we have. So that would be two acres. So Ag Residential, Ag Residential. And then the next category that you guys have is that two acre threshold.
Whoa, I thought that was the... R1A was 30,000, and that's like, like the site condos there. I know there's site condos that meets what we have today. Really, when you look at those, and there's a lake halfway through those, those are three quarter acre parcels of usable space.
Answer.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They're an acre and a half, and that's what we talked about a couple of meetings ago. Wanting to...
Well over 30,000 feet.
Not crazy over, though. I mean, abusable, yes, they are, but it goes to a lake. I mean, personally, that's, so I'd want to see that. Have to be bigger. And I know some of that goes with the site condos, being able to do, you know, 1.4, and it falls in that R1A, but if we can make that, no one wants subdivisions. I know it's not a subdivision, but that's, we hear everybody, we don't want a bunch of subdivisions.
The density.
Right.
It's essentially, there's no way to do something.
Right. Then we're given these acre and a half parcels that really are three quarters of an acre.
And it's very...
Nothing against sale, I mean, against anybody.
But what your 30,000 square foot really determines is, one, you have available only water and sewer, or you have very sandy soils. That will govern. You cannot do a regular perk, you know, elevated field on less than an acre. It's not allowed. So the 30,000 is pretty unique in Almont Township because you don't have water and sewer. So it does kind of police itself, but that's something they definitely want to look at to see where, if that's viable. And sometimes like, I think we've mentioned, or Alex mentioned before, is that you can do that with a caveat, if sewer is available, water and sewer, 30,000, otherwise it's this. That's very common in communities.
What was that minimum threshold if you guys want for that low density residential?
It was 2 acres and something like Ag Residential.
Right. That's what you guys said was two acres.
That's what Ag Res is now.
Right.
We had talked about making Ag Res a little bigger and making the R1.
I remember that, and then we were also concerned of when, all that, would this be that in compliance rate?
Well, for a matter of existing. They're existing, so they're legal. It would be essentially legal type of requirement, if you will, so they can continue to operate. But, you know, the thing was, we were looking to, so essentially, you could change the Ag Residential requirement, but the question was, we're going to eliminate R1B. So did you want to keep, obviously you remove R1B, but what would you want for R1A? So we could, you know, just change it number to two. We could do two, or one, or... So I guess...
So is residential low two acre minimum?
You could put that in your zoning plan. So right now...
Currently? Because it's a 30,000?
You can fire it on your zoning plan. I had a letter of, what was it you guys last week? We were talking about that.
I got it here. It's January 9th, Alex?
Yeah. That was a zoning plan draft chart. Right. So we have 30,000 square feet is what's currently existing. So I have draft proposal authority, but we could obviously change those numbers. So if you recall, this chart here, which I showed what you have and what should be your zoning plan going forward in the master plan, which gives a recommendation to your zoning ordinance. So Ag Residential is a two acres, and they have R1A and 30. Now, if you guys want to change those numbers, that's up to you guys. So you could do one acre, call it an acre, one five, or...
For R1A?
43, 560.
So engineers input on that that does development. If you don't have water and sewer, acre is your only practical minimal because that covers like with the septic code and different things that you have to do for that. And I said, what we do see a lot of is that, but if you ever have water and sewer, which is not, where in the near future for Almont Township, not to say it can't happen, but I think that's been talked about as long as I've been here for 20 years, so. But well in septic, your practical minimum is an acre. It just is, and that's pretty well established. If you ever go to the health department, they'll tell you that. You're not going to get a perk on here, you're half an acre. Unless you have beautiful, great sandy soils, and it can work. But that's not the norm.
Is that what you're getting at there? For R1A to increase that to 30,000?
We had just talked about it.
Apologies, Alex, for, I think I was with the change of the, what zoning requirements were and changing kind of what we're calling these. I kind of got confused on that. Kind of my thoughts on this map as a whole is like, so we have orchards in that area. Like, to me, if we ended up getting a few subdivisions, you know, if we start growing at the rate that cities and townships to the south of us do, my concern is that we're going to have smaller subdivisions. And to your point, Corey, I mean, yeah, the septic might be the limiting fact, but if they find out a way to get around that or something like that, if a developer figures out a way to get around that, yeah, do we...
With a site condo, you have to, you still have to, you can only do a site condo if you have sandy soils. That's the only way to do it. You can't, you can't just, site condo and have smaller lots. So you have to, you have to have all the underlying criteria to go to the subdivision. But to your point with the orchards are, that's currently where the sand is at. So I mean, that is, that is a possibility in that area to have the smaller lots. You've got Pinecrest on the west side. This is on Kitter Road, but what's between Kitter Road and Van Dyke is a gravel pit. So there is...
I know it's a little bit sand west of Van Dyke, I know, too.
Yeah, there's definitely a possibility in that area to do that.
And all these places that are maybes are where site condos are popping up, were smaller.
I guess my whole point is that, you know, we have this diamond to the south with orchards that families go to in the fall that takes away from that when you put in developments that might make it look like more of the subdivision that they left to come to go pick apples or what have you. It's just my two cents.
To up the acreage, the square feet. That's what our master plan indicated, that people want not subdivisions. They want larger country parcels.
One acre, not R1A.
At least one acre.
I agree.
What about the rest of the board? Do you agree, one acre? So how do you feel about that?
I agree.
Looks really good, Alex. Thank you so much.
So I have guys, so.
So where do we stand in wrapping this thing up?
Pretty soon. I'm just, you know, with Jason leaving, I doubled my client list. You guys are not party list, obviously. Here, I'll show up, you know, I'll make you, I can't show up this month. Yeah, I hope to start putting this together and get you guys copy. I'm not sure if it's going to happen next month, even the month afterwards. And then you guys can review that draft, make edits. And it might take probably another month. But it's pretty much going to give you homework to say, all right, here it is. Look at it over a month, and then come back with comments. Hopefully, we can get it all together and make any necessary changes. And you guys will see a road to the finished draft, and you guys will say, yeah, we're good. And I will, you know, make, pass a resolution to accept this and pass it to the township board, and then probably carry it. So on and so forth, so.
So at this point, then, all of the input you need from the planning commission, you have?
Yep. We did all the background information, you know, we did history research, we did the demographics, we did natural features, we did all that sort of stuff. And then the public input, of course. See all that and take that in. And then it became, you know, obviously also existing land use. And then we went through goals, objectives, and tasks based on public input that you guys have. And then we developed a future land use map and zoning plan. And that was kind of it. It's not, you know, there's nothing, nothing here in the township that you guys elected to study. Like, of the cities we worked with, where they own the city roads, and they wanted for a few different land uses and housing types and road classifications and intersections, and those things go into it. Or county master plans, which we do that are much, much bigger in scope and budget, which, you know, certain counties do all the planning and zoning for the county, with the exception of a couple of cities, but everyone else is in that. So it's way more public participation process and timing with that, and it takes longer. So, yeah, I mean, there is simply all that, much more to really look at. At this point, it's busy, right?
When you reference public input, are you talking about the survey?
That's the motive of it. You're not required to do it.
I think it worked out well.
But you guys chose to do it, and that's what you guys wanted to do. It typically tends to be the best way of getting public input. We've had open houses, and sometimes you get three people, sometimes you get 300.
Okay. Anything else to add, Alex?
I feel like I talk too much. Nothing for you guys to be... No, I have nothing really to add. Just glad things were along.
Agreed. Are you, Corey?
No, we don't. I anticipate a monthly report next month. It's April. We really have an activity. Pinecrest, Lombardo Homes are, I think they're going to gear up here in April to start again. That's really the only construction activity we have. I'll summarize it, because we like them every month when there's activity. There really hasn't been other than this plan and the mini storage. And we've touched on those at each meeting. But it has been, it's a quarterly thing, so I'm going to just summarize everything at that point. So next month, you'll have one. Just summarize where we're at on current everything, even though it hasn't been a lot of activity. It's a good starting point for the summer construction.
I think I'll add one more thing. Just, you know, we're doing the master plan. If you have some applicants, some kind of interesting situations, just keep note of that. You know, if there's things that you guys want to do after the master plan, text amendment wise, it's the appropriate time to do it. I know I've said it before, but here we are, you know, with the communication tower and other things. There's things that are in your zoning ordinance, and I can't speak to why it is that way. I know parole was involved, but there's also different planning commission at that time, too. So, you know, if there's some gaps or things that you want to look at, or, you know, keep note of those things. It's the purview and the responsibility of the planning commission to look at that stuff, so.
There are.
Yeah. More to look at, I'm scared.
Tracy, anything from zoning board? Tracy, anything from zoning board?
I don't have anything.
Aida, any zoning and building reports?
Items I have possibly the communication tower coming back, if they may be deadline. Master plan and possible shakos, fireworks, if they have been able to secure their permits through state.
Thank you. And then, general comments from the planning commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
This was, I had an email, which I've been looking for, relative to commercial solar energy farms. And now I see what the attorney did, addressed, addressed, don't worry about the laws of the state of Michigan. However, I think we, and he did say that if you wanted to look at your current ordinance, go ahead and do that, because we, we're weak in that ordinance as far as smaller solar energy farms under 10 megawatts. One in Lapeer is 80 megawatts, and it's 340 acres, I found out today.
Okay.
But our, our, I think we need to look at our ordinance, and I don't know how to engage our experts over here to do that, or the thought, maybe we should take a look at it first before we... Right now, the only thing that I don't like about it is there's a 60-foot buffer. I have no idea what a 60-foot buffer means. That's about all it says. So I think, maybe we should all take a look at that for the next meeting, and come back to some more. I think as far as the state law goes, that's...
I talked about a bunch of places, so.
Yeah, it's...
Same clients that you guys on solar. It's been a lot of my work last year, and, yeah, it's probably good to revisit that. And we have, I have stuff that people worry about, so if you guys want to, I'll be happy to help you guys out. Yeah.
Anyone else? All right.
What's in Twitter?
I will second that.
Okay, I'm getting your chart. 8:30.
That's 8:04 over there.
8:34.
I'm sorry, what's the number we're using?
8:34.
8:34?